Than just talking about his firm and, you know. Shooting the breeze about solar development in New Jersey, uh, and I gave him some specifics about the status of the landfill project was the, uh, power. That was along Route fifty, um, and I said that should come out in this, uh. Paper study that, uh, our energy consultants, uh, doing, so.
He had indicated to me, I wanna, uh, get it out there that, and, and I don't know if he would be able to achieve what's what he's looking to do, but. He's looking to, uh, put five megawatts of power, that's twenty-five acres. Uh, it takes five acres to, uh, make one megawatt on or about, and I don't know if he would be able to fulfill. Uh, his quest to develop that property, and I don't know if anybody's going to do it. It's gonna be a little tricky because enable for someone to put some type of a massive solar development maybe there, they make it work their while, they need to do, um. A minimum of four and preferably five, uh, megawatts, which. But I don't believe that the pine lands is gonna allow us to, uh, go beyond the scope of where the actual, um, um, recall. The actual process, probably.
Yeah, the, the BPU and the DEP currently have, uh, um, restrictions, I guess you would call them, that. Uh, you know, they want the development on rooftops, landfills or brownfields, and for a landfill project, it can only be on the footprint of where the waste is. Which on this site is, uh, the numbers here, and I gotta run them, uh, five point seven acres, so it's enough for. One megawatt, maybe, maybe a little bit more, uh, the panels are getting more efficient nowadays, they're. Up to almost four forty, uh, four hundred, uh, watts per pound, so, um.
And that's a forested area, correct, uh, Jeff?
Yeah, it's within the forest management area, so the pine lands is a, is an issue, uh, the access to, uh, power and the distance to the, uh. The near substations issue, that should come out in this study, uh, that I'll have by the end of the week. Um, and I, I'm just not very optimistic about solar development on this particular site, just because of the. Constraints that exist, um.
Let me ask you this, because a forested area is not a permitted use, what if that was actually, uh, I, I, I'm not sure if we're doing the update on our master plan this year? Hope it's gonna be next year, but what if we were to change that particular site during the course of our master plan and have that as highway commercial? How do you feel about that then?
Well, I mean, I, I, I'm not sure that's gonna, that, that's not gonna change anything with the pine lands, uh.
Is it still classified as forested?
Uh, yeah, yes, I believe so, and again, I, the only, I haven't, I haven't gone forward with that with the Pine Lands Commission, again, we are. We currently actually aren't under any contract, so until, until that, if that happens, then we can move forward on, looking at some of these other options, and if we wanna. Look at, uh, if we could get a solar developer interested, then we would, uh, as we've discussed before, incorporate. Uh, some of their design into the landfill closure plan for efficiency sake, um, but. We're, uh, we're not there yet, uh, I'm hoping that this study, uh, it's being done by a company called Greener by Design, uh, and. Uh, they're very, very, uh, knowledgeable in, in energy, uh, not just in New Jersey, but because they are headquartered here, so. Um, hopefully they'll, they'll give us a, a quick evaluation on, on what the prospects are, and I'll pass that on to, uh, Jeff. Uh, Birch's company is called Solarstone, they're out of Minnesota, they have two projects now in New Jersey, both, I think both are in the Highlands.
Actually, one's in Burlington County.
Was it, okay, well, at least one's in the Highlands. He was talking about challenges with the Highlands relative to Pine Lands, and obviously completely different, but. Uh, still have some additional constraints beyond just, you know, normal DEP.
He's fairly familiar with the Pine Lands because he's doing a, uh, project in Burlington County, which is, uh, Pine Lands, uh, uh, area. So, he's fairly knowledgeable for the most part about what you can and cannot do with those people. Uh, Jeff, you gave a revised, uh, list, I, I believe all the members of council, uh, did in fact, uh, receive it, correct?
I believe so, uh, Councilwoman Sparks, did you get a copy? Cause I, I don't have, I didn't have your email, I didn't realize that, I.
No, I didn't get a copy.
Okay, I thought I'd ask Judd or, uh, Randy to forward it on to you, um. Um, if I, I get your email and make sure you, you get a copy, so I apologize.
Okay.
Uh, anyway, I mean, I, I was prepared to go through the, the email or findings and how we got to where, from where we were to where we are, if you want me to do that.
That's actually why I did have you on here tonight, so. Where we're, where we're headed.
Sure, so, uh, we had a lot of discussions, uh, I started with the, uh, NJDEP officer Brownfields, uh, they manage the HTSRF program. And for this project, since it's been an HTSRF project, uh, they would issue the, uh, approvals, uh. From the department on the landfill closure, and had previously issued, again, we talked about back in two thousand twelve, the, uh, approval of the remedial action work plan, so. Um, I, I took, talked to them specifically about, um, HTSRF grant monies, and in the email I provide. Um, oh, thanks, Judd, there's, uh, 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 Ms. Sparks' email, um. Uh, what, what could be eligible from prior work and what could be eligible in the current, uh, current scope. Um, that, you know, since we don't have a de- a development project, uh, here. Uh, they're not super excited about the project, uh, although they have funded it in the past and they do want it to be finished. So that's basically the, the gist, uh, we talked about with them, and then I also spoke to the, some of the folks in the, uh. Ecological group about the scope and Officer Brownfield's, uh, main suggestion. Was to try to reduce the scope of work, and as we had kinda talked about earlier, we had been working on that. Uh, we were able to, the primary reduction in the scope was from the, uh, survey work, we were able to locate an old. Uh, way back, uh, closure plan and a two thousand eight, uh, topographic survey. Uh, conferred with Fralinger on that, and they gave us, uh, new, uh, uh, estimates. Which include some spot surveying, and then I, I don't think I advised council this, but the. Pine Lands Commission wants us to actually survey the wetland boundary and the wetland area. And include that on, you know, in our, in our, uh, our next report to them, so they have verified where, you know, where it actually is.
Right.
Um, the other reduction was really mainly in the sampling, uh, that was within the scope. Um, in con- in consult with, uh, uh, Vince Agavino, he's our, uh, our sub consultant ecological specialist. Um, he and I worked together and, and talked about the reductions in the, in the scope of work for primarily the lab work. Um, so we knocked that down a little bit, so that's where those, those reductions, uh, have occurred. Um, the other, um. Um, I answered, uh, one other question there and, and, uh, went through some of the other stuff, the other, um. Component was that, um, uh, we had discussed this a long time ago, but, and, uh. The mayor had provided an email to me a while ago, uh, there is a, uh, some availability of grant funding. Through the US Department of Agriculture for rural communities, that still matter qualifies as a rural community, as I'm sure you all are, are aware. Um, and the good news there is that the, uh, NJIT has a Brownfields, uh, support group. That can provide free, uh, consulting and, uh, on how to work with the USDA, um, I've got another project there. We're just starting to enter that process, uh, but certainly that's some, another place we could look, so. Um, my feel about the HTSRF is that they would be, uh, willing to, and we'll file, we could file an application with all of the numbers I. Put in the email, uh, in the app, my feeling is that they would be, uh. And again, it's just my feeling, uh, from working with them and, and some of the discussions, that they would be able, be willing to. Uh, provide somewhere between fifteen and twenty-five thousand dollars of grant funding, uh, toward this, uh, additional scope. Help, uh, get over the hump, and then, uh, I am not sure what the, uh, funding availability would be from the US, uh, uh. Uh, Department of Agriculture, but, um, would certainly be willing to work with the city and the NJIT and the USDA. To explore that option, um, it is specifically a Brownfields program, and to bring, you know. Community assets back online, if you will, so. Um, that certainly is a, another option, um. One thing I wanna make mayor and council aware of, cause we have not discussed this, uh, I know that the money is a big deal here, so. There will be, uh, we've talked about the post-closure care, the O and M requirements within a landfill closure plan, that there's, you know. Uh, a period of monitoring of thirty years, and, uh, the part of the closure plan, uh, includes a financial plan. And there has to be some funding for that post-closure work in the closure plan, so. And I'm not sure what the status is, I know there was an escrow account before, I don't know if that's still there. Uh, relative to other landfill closure projects that I've been involved with, this, this will be a pretty, you know, a, a lower cost, but. Thirty years is a long time, and, you know, two thousand dollars a year over thirty years adds up, right, so. Um, that will be a component with it, I did speak with, uh, the DEP about that, uh, Ron Winkowski, who's our. Case manager in the Office of Brownfield Reuse will be, uh, will be working with that, and, uh. With us on that, and there are, they, they, they do get creative with municipalities, cause they understand the constraints and the challenges. Of, uh, of how we could possibly provide a approvable financial plan for that, um, uh, going forward, and, uh. Again, I'm not exactly sure what those numbers will be, but as we put the landfill closure plan together, that would, that would bear out, um. Um, and the only other thing is that there was also, uh, the only other thing that I'm not, uh. Um, is there's a fee for the landfill closure plans in the middle, and Ronald worked on that, I mean, that's, uh. Don't, don't, don't panic, that's, uh, when you get to a major project in multiple tens of twenties of acres, it's, it's into the twenty and thirty thousand dollars, um. This particular fee, he said, would probably be a minor, uh, 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 plan, which would be between eleven hundred and thirty-five hundred dollars. Um, so that's part of the solid waste, uh, landfill closure process, um. So I just wanted to throw those additional, uh, financial, uh, factors on the table, um.
There's some people in the waiting room, can you let them in, please?
So.
Randy, I have a, uh, question that I wanna ask, that's, um, an unusual question, but I know that there, uh, I, I spoke to one person from a. Far distant county, and, uh, someone even contacted me, uh, from out of state, but there seems to be.
In the waiting room, can you let them in, please?
Okay, I just, they just came in, I see, okay.
I don't, I don't know where that's, who's, who's speaking out, turned out, but.
I appreciate the heads up, I try to keep track of the waiting room.
All right, um. There, there seems to be a trend that's out there, uh, there's monies that are available, Randy, and what I'm hearing is that. There are some companies that would be willing to bore the cost, such as like what, uh, LRS is proposing to us. And they will be willing to bore those costs, uh, in an effort to move forward. To reacclimate that property into some type of constructive use, that being solar. And I talked to this company here, Solarstone, and asked if they were interested in doing something like that as well, and honestly, I have no idea. The legal parameters of how that would work, but, I mean, obviously it's gotta go out to an RFP, but. How would we do something like that if we start to move forward in that direction, so that Mr., uh, Mr. Die is aware of it as well? Because if you have a company that comes around and say, hey, we wanna take your landfill, we wanna, uh, pay the, uh, the final cost of what you have. Why would we say no to that?
Well, I, I, I think what you need to do is, first of all, I, I, I think you need to make a business assessment. Going forward as to what the value of that property is in its reclaimed state, and I think council would then need that information. In order to evaluate whether they want to do the reclamation themselves and u- utilize the property, or, uh. Or essentially turn over the property to a third party to reclaim the property and utilize it for their own purposes. I, I have no idea of the economics of the, of that decision, if council were inclined. To want to present it by RFP to both. Um, to, to both, uh, do the remediation, and also, uh, then have a certain term of use of the property. And then you, that's how you do it, you do it by RFP.
And that would have to be in conjunction with, uh, LRS, cause I mean, obviously if they're gonna be doing the final. Closeout on this year, I mean, if, if, then they would be responsible to pay, um, to pay their fee.
Well, I would think that the, the, uh, the entity, if somebody were, were interested, and I sort of agree with Mr. Die. And the property is, is small for a solar field, um, my understanding, understanding is that they're usually looking at five. At five megawatts, but I, I could be wrong, um, but. They, they would not necessarily have to use, uh, Mr. Guy's company, they could use, uh, another entity in order to do the closure.
Sure, that, um, if you don't mind, they, they could use whoever they want, the other common option there is that they would dinner into the, a lease with the city, the successful bidder. Uh, but they would take on the cost of the remediation as just part of, part of their cost to put the solar in, that, that happens as well, so.
And Mr. Die is correct about that.
Right, so we would just simply be the host, uh, and, and lease the property, and then they would have, they would have to be assuming of all the, uh, costs that would be associated with it.
All right, listen here, motherfuckers, I'm the one who in charge of here.
Excuse me, who, who is that, Randy?
Do you like show up now, like yours?
Randy, who was that?
I re- I removed them from the meeting.
Who was it?
Muriel, somebody or other.
Muriel?
I have no idea who it was, they're out.
It's just a hack, so much, they do that to, uh, assume meetings.
That's very distasteful.
More than, th- there's been a lot worse, as Mr. Moore just said.
May I just ask you, how were they able to get into this?
Well, I let any, anybody in the waiting room in, I don't know what.
You let them in, but every, you, you're, you're the only one that's, if you're facilitating this, Randy, uh, you're, how are they able to start speaking, like. I see a, a, a number of people that are on the, uh, line right now, they're not able to talk, you have to bring them in to talk, so how do they get in?
Well, they, everybody on this call who is muted has muted themselves as a courtesy to mayor and council. So I don't, I don't mute people, I can remove them, just like I removed that person.
Okay.
But, in any event, back to the original question, the, the risk that you run in, in pursuing the, the lease. And the remediation is that, uh, first of all, you don't control how the cleanup is done, and how the remediation is done. But you're still responsible for it, um, and you'd agree with me on that, wouldn't you, Mr. Die?
Yes, sir.
And, and the other thing is, Mayor, I have, you're gonna have to get some economic advice on what, what is a, is a good deal. Uh, to put it bluntly, I have no idea how to evaluate that. And, and maybe Mr. Die or somebody in his field can do that, after what a good proposal is, but I have no, no clue what that would be. I don't know if anybody else on council does.
I'm just gonna take a stab and a guess and say that that would have to be done by an RFP that were looking to, uh, lease our property, and, you know. I, I would assume, Randy, that we're gonna have to have some kind of terms as to what we think, uh, is the, uh, starting bid to loot, to, you know, to lease it.
I mean, I, I don't, it's not gonna be a bid, and you're probably right, Mayor, um, the, the way to, to do that is through a competitive process. Through the RFP process, and presumably, people are gonna submit their best proposal, and that way you get the best proposal. Um, but, that would be the process to do that, but, again, I, I'm sort of in Mr. Die's camp on this one. Uh, I just don't know how feasible it is to develop solar on this property.
So we'll have to find some other type of acable, acable use to, uh, use that property where it's gonna have the least intensive use of it as well. That's where we are, whether it be a storage facility, whatever it may be, but you have to do something with it, so it just doesn't sit there and. Just keep on draining us. Uh, um, all right, so we'll, Jeff, put together, uh, your final numbers, um, I think you said something about the, uh. HTSRF is going to supply some additional funding, um, did you ever find out from them? Of any of this recoverable money that we spoke of at our last meeting?
Yeah, well, I listed in the email all of the potential recoverable monies from past, which is about, I think, forty-six thousand dollars, I'm sorry. Close that out here, um. Yeah, and, uh, then we've got about, uh, fifty thousand plus or minus in the current, uh, current, uh. Proposal, um, again, however, I, 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 again, my indication is that they're probably gonna be in the range of fifteen to twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, of, of grant contribution to the project, um, just based on discussions with them, and, uh. Now, that might change if we do have a viable redevelopment option, uh, that's when they can get behind it, um. They, they are willing to fund some portion of this now because they've funded in the past and they wanna see it completed. Um, and, uh, we would file an application, like I said, for all eligible costs. Um, and, but that's, uh, but it's up to them to make a determination on what they think is eligible and what they're willing to provide as a grant. Um, so eligible and grant award are, you know, two separate things typically. Um, so, yeah, my proposals that I've sent in with the, with the, and I did provide some details, so everybody could look at that. Uh, how we came up with the numbers, um, you know, that's our, those are our numbers.
Right, we'll continue with this conversation in a later time then, thanks, Jeff, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Rob, Mr. Die? Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Die? No?
Well, my question is, you're gonna send it to me?
Yes, I just, I just got your email from Judd, uh, uh, Ms. Sparks, and I'll forward it to you right now.
Ms. Sparks, I, I sent it to your, uh, your city email and your personal email.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jeff, for coming out, appreciate it, take care. Moving down the line here, um. A, um. We have the adoption of a revision of the codification of city ordinances, I guess this is gonna be done on the first reading, correct, Randy, that's what we're doing here?
This is the first reading, and Mayor, I'd like to recognize my colleague, uh, Mr. Richard DeLucrey, who is with us, and he has worked. Uh, tirelessly with, uh, Ms. Cassagrande. Uh, um, and they, they have compiled this project, um, so if there's any questions from council, this is the first reading, of course. Um, and I know that Mr. Pogue has proposed, uh, and, uh, dividing this into three sections. Um, I discussed that with Mr. DeLucrey, and, and he does not agree with doing that, I know that, I don't believe Mrs. Cassagrande agrees with doing that either. Um, but I asked Mr. DeLucrey to join us this evening in case the, the, the council had any questions.
Mr. DeLucrey, you wanna start off, I would assume?
Um, certainly, um, I, I actually defer to Ms. Castle Grande for, uh, the bulk of this, uh, but as Randy indicated. It's on first reading tonight, after first reading, uh, assuming that council, uh, approves it on first reading. Then you'll be asked to also adopt a resolution formally referring it to the planning board. With their review under, uh, section twenty-six of the municipal land use law, that's basically a review of the, uh, land use related provisions. And disordinance to make sure they're consistent with your master plan. Um, there are very few changes in the, uh, land use development portion of your, uh, your code. Uh, and the changes that are there are more technical and, uh, you know, basic. Uh, so I would not expect that there would be any, uh, finding by the planning board that are inconsistent with the master plan, but it's still a required, uh, form of step. Before the ordinance can come back to council for second reading.
Okay. Um, any members of council have any comments, questions, whatever? So, I guess I'll make the, uh, motion to, uh, introduce. The, uh. The ordinance, that would be ordinance number, um, we don't have an ordinance number at this.
It's ordinance.
Okay, ordinance one dash twenty-two-one, I make the necessary motions, are you okay?
Okay.
Uh, any discussion, comments, whatever? Mrs. Cassgrain, do you have any comments? I would like to open it to you, you were a major part of this here to move it forward, and I wanna. Once again, thank you for all of your efforts, and. Don't starting this, that kinda fell asleep at the switch from years back, so, thank you again.
Oh, you're welcome, and, um, it's nice to see who Mr. DeLucrey is after all these, uh. Uh, hours of, uh, his helping me so much, so, uh, this is, this is a nice treat, and it's, it seems like it's pretty straightforward. I just have questions on, um, the, uh. Public information part of it that I sent you this email about, and how that's all gonna get out to the public, but other than that. Seems like that's all on its way, it's pretty exciting.
Okay, uh, so there is a, uh, motion, there's a second, there's no further comment, uh, we need a roll call.
Mr. Dilch?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Ms. Ella?
Yes.
Ms. Sparks?
Yes.
Mayor Vanessa?
Uh, yes, with the exception of whatever amendments that are being done to the, uh, forestry plan, because I would be in conflict with that. Um, motion carried, moving down the line here, we have, um. Um. Ordinance number two dash twenty-one for the, uh, budget cap, Randy, I'm gonna let this moment shine in your corner right now, because. This is a little complicated how to say the, uh, budget cap, but, um, I would definitely refer this one to you. I know exactly what it does, but it's, I, I don't have the proper words, the way that you would say it.
And I remember you did this to me last year, Mayor, and I'm going to defer, defer to Mr. Moore, who. Fully understands this.
I could take a stab at it, I think it's, uh, basically what we're doing here is, we're having a little cushion, that in the event that there's a, uh, we, we're gonna. Appropriate and adopt X amount of dollars for our budget, and this is just an additional three and a half percent, in the event that there's some type of an emergency that comes up. I mean, where will we go for the funds, it would be in that three and a half percent, is that about, correct, Randy, would you say?
I, I agree, as long as Mr. Moore confirms.
Yes, what it is, is that, uh. The Department of Community Affairs comes out with the cap percentage each year, and this year's two and a half percent, but there also, this is cap. Law where we can go up to three and a half percent, so we're adding an additional one percent increase, uh, into our. Cap bank is what it's called, so that in the event that we want to go up to our appropriations. From two and a half percent of last year's appropriations to three and a half percent of last year's appropriations, which is what it's based on. We have that allowance, and if we do not do that, then it goes into what we call a two-year cap bank, so that. Percentage, that amount of money of the percentage is in a bank, not cash, but just on record. So that in future years, we can use additional bank money, so in essence, you could go up to maybe five or six percent. Past appropriations from a prior year, that doesn't mean that we're gonna have a tax increase, because you have other revenues that would offset that. But it just allows you, so, special circumstances, whatever it may be, we may wanna do something in the budget, that we want to exceed. Uh, those cap amounts, so that's what it is, every town that I know does this, just as a safeguard. Uh, so that, uh, we have that allowance.
Okay, so, how many, how much do we have currently in our, uh, cap bank?
I would have to look that up, uh, Mayor, I'm not prepared to.
I guess the reality is, that, that's, that rolls over each and every year until it starts to accumulate a larger amount, or you only have.
Only for two years.
Only for two years, and then what happens? Then it goes back, then it goes back into service?
No.
No.
No, it just goes away, it's not money, it, it, it's, uh, it's, um.
It's a mechanism to go into using more money.
Spend more money, exactly.
Gotcha, never mind, okay, got it. Uh, I make the necessary motion to appropriate, uh, ordinance number, uh, two, um. Dash twenty-one for the budget cap, I'd make that motion, the second, Ms. Ella makes the second, if there's no further comments. Um, I need a roll call on this.
Yes, so, Mr. Dilch?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Ms. Ella?
Yes.
Ms. Sparks?
Yes.
Mayor Vanessa did.
Yes, okay, that was painless, uh, moving down to resolutions, we have, uh, forty-two dash twenty, twenty-one. Uh, Mr. Lafridi, do you feel that this is something that we should go into close session to discuss? Uh, Mr. LaFerty, do you feel that this is something that we should go in a closed session to discuss, or just hold off until the end of the meeting?
I, I thought, that's the intent, Mayor, yes.
Okay, so we'll hold off on this one here. We'll get down to, uh, resolution forty-three, uh, twenty twenty-one for the leap implementation. Uh, Matt, you and I had a somewhat rather in- interesting conversation, or I apologize, Mr. Olson. Uh, where did you find out that there's a hundred and thirty hours that's involved to make this application?